This conference will now be recorded.
The Republic for which it stands. Thanks Zach, you're the only one that stood up. Okay, we have a moment of silence before we continue. Thank you all. Well, good evening to all participating tonight. We're back to having this fun little video thing, your virtual thing here. So anyway, the first item on the agenda will be approval of the minutes from the November the ninth, twenty twenty meeting.
I'm going to approve the minutes from November ninth.
Zach, I'm gonna let you.
I've got Councilmember Khar with the motion.
And Malat, I think seconded it, yeah.
Got it.
Alright, very good. So do a roll call on that. Zach, if you would.
Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Khar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Driver?
Yeah.
Very good, motion carries. Thank you very much. The next item will be statement of the bills paid in amount of three hundred and six thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine eighty-eight.
Zach, I had a couple of questions on that one. Would you or Mike just give a brief explanation on this?
Sure. Oh, go ahead.
I'll go ahead and handle it. So one question was, I believe, on the payment to Kootok Rock of about fifty-six thousand dollars. Is that on page?
It's on page one of the register.
Yeah, page one on the register. Most of those expenses are related to the litigation item. A little bit of it is just normal items, about two or three thousand dollars. Those that are related to litigation actually are being paid for out of unallocated CID funds, and there is an outstanding balance that has been sent to Compass Commodity for the payment. And if those aren't paid, then we'll take that out of future CID dollars and any other legal costs going forward that relates to that ticker item. So it shows up here, but the funding is actually coming out of what were areas one and three, CID areas one and three. Some of that was unallocated and there was money in there. So that's how we paid for it. So no direct tax dollars to the citizens. I believe your other issue, apparently there's an error on the fire department budget page that it shows that we have about forty-five thousand dollars in vision. Clearly, that is incorrect on the year-to-date. I'll have to research that, but it appears that I think, looked it up quickly, it occurred in July, and so we just, obviously, we need to correct it and we'll change that out. And then the third thing I would just note, if you had looked at these over the month, you would have probably noticed there was no overtime online items. The way that our, we put in a new pay system this year, and it was putting all the costs, whether it's regular or overtime, into the regular pay line and not into the overtime line. And so we finally got all that cleaned up and did a journal entry. So it's now accurate through, you know, through October. So the general pay line went down, and of course, the overtime line went up to offset that. So those are now accurate between pay and overtime. End of the day, it's the same, comes out of the same place, but we want to be accurate in how we put those in there. Hopefully, that answered your questions.
Yes, thank you. Do we need to, when we move to pay the bills, do we need to make any adjustments on that or notes?
I don't believe so. The revenue and expense report is really just for your reference, so there's not really approving the bills to be, it's not part of approving the bills to be paid. The Kootok Rock bill is accurate in its amount. So we have a motion to approve the statement of the bills paid. If we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Chuck Adams, we have a motion and a second. So it has been moved in a second and to approve the statement of the bills paid. Would the clerk please call roll? You got that Zach? I'm not sure who made the motion, just for verification. Was that?
Yeah, I've got it. I'm sorry, I forgot I was on mute. Stites?
No. Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Khar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Driver? Councilmember Driver?
I don't see her name there, so.
She's one of the callers.
Okay.
She might be having internet issues or, well, she's not using the internet, so I couldn't say for sure.
Are you asking me, Zach?
Uh, Driver.
Are you waiting? I said yes.
Okay.
Okay.
We didn't hear you, Margaret. Thank you very much.
I apologize. I'm very sorry.
You're fine. Okay, so the motion has carried, so.
Yes, sir.
All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda, but we request your comments from the public. And Mike, I don't know how you want to handle this, or Zach, you tell me. If we don't have anybody, we'll just move on then.
Uh, we don't have any comments that were sent in beforehand, but we do have someone who, looks like we've got a couple of guests online. I've got the screen sharing on, here we go. So if you are online and would like to make a comment, please do so now and start with your name and address for the record. And I am not seeing it.
Move on to the next item on the agenda, and that is to consider resolution twenty twenty sixteen regarding the closure of Steel Road between K thirty-two and Crestwood Drive. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. As you know, we've had some discussion about this segment of road. This is that area between K thirty-two and Steel Road. There are no driveways or properties that need access at this section. Over time, that road has somewhat deteriorated, been narrow. And so it's our recommendation that we will close that road, but we will not abandon the right-of-way so that the road could be upgraded in the future or if there's other uses. Zach has just the attachment that shows the area in question. Again, as you see, there's no properties that directly access it, somewhat with the exception of the one in the lower triangular piece, which is owned by the land bank, which would probably ultimately get donated over to the city for some future use. There'd been some discussions of park or other adjacent highway type of use. So nobody is impacted as it directly relates to access to or from their properties. And then Zach, if you can put the next two photos up, please. So this is looking from K thirty-two, approximately where we would close it, at the right-of-way line. So you can see going up into the hills and the woods. And then the next photo is looking in the opposite direction. Zach, can you put that one up? Again, approximately, this would be the location where we would put up signs. The signs would basically be end of road, which are red diamonds mounted on posts across the road area. So as you can see, it's barely the width of one lane as it is today. Obviously, access out to Ninety-Eighth Street, which is probably the safer point to have a four-way intersection for entering and exiting the roadway. So with that, it would be a recommendation to adopt resolution twenty twenty sixteen, which would close the road. It does not abandon the right-of-way until some future time that we either decide to abandon the right-of-way or use this area for other purposes or reopen it as a route. With that, I'll quit answering questions.
This is Stites to make a recommendation that we adopt resolution twenty twenty sixteen regarding the closure of Steel Road between K thirty-two and Crestwood Drive.
I guess.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty twenty sixteen regarding the closure of Steel Road between K thirty-two and Crestwood Drive. Would the clerk please?
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Is that road just going to be marked as closed or will it actually access to it be cut off?
The access will be basically cut off. We will install signs, square tube signs, that then have on top of them triangles approximately about every six feet. There'll be a sign with the red triangle, which is the sign indicating an end-of-road sign. So yeah, it'll be closed off. I can't say that nobody could go around it. If we have a problem with that, then we would address that through some other means. That would be necessary. But yeah, the intent is close it on both ends with signage.
Okay, thank you.
And it's been closed through the use of just barricades for the last couple of months. Okay, if there are no further questions, Zach, would you please call roll?
Yeah, I will. Just want to let everybody know, in between discussion, I'm going to mute all the non-speakers to try to cut back on potential echoing effects. So I've got, I'm gonna go ahead and unmute you guys now, but if you're not unmuted and you want to make a comment or chime in, just be aware that I'm going to have you muted beforehand. That, Councilmember Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Khar?
Yes.
Malat? Malat?
Yes, there. We're playing tag here.
I know, yeah, I was unmuted. And then Councilmember Driver?
Yes.
Perfect.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda will be here, report regarding Wyandotte County Public Library System and consider any recommendations. You're on, Mike. Thank you. I got muted there, so I had to unmute again. So I've had, over time, several councilmembers in different settings and somewhat during our budget discussion, you know, the issue of taxes and taxation have come up, and somewhat specifically, the library, the Wyandotte County Library System and its tax and kind of how it works. So I provided to you a fairly, myself and our city attorney, Ms. Dehon, a fairly lengthy agenda memo with a number of attachments. So I'm not going to go through that word for word, but I have created a series of slides. And so we'll start with the first one here, please, Zach. So just to provide some history here, as I understand it, the initial library, Wyandotte County Library System, was formed in nineteen sixty-five by the Wyandotte County Commission. As you know, at that time, you had separate Wyandotte County Commission and a City of Kansas City, Kansas. It was created under statute, which I know I've referenced several times, but basically in chapter twelve, there was statute that was adopted in nineteen fifty-one that allowed for this creation of library districts or these special library types of bodies. And so this is a statutorily-created library and a statutorily-created body, being the Wyandotte County Library Board. Initially, that board was comprised of five persons. It was set up from what the records indicate that it served the areas of the county not already served by a library, which we know that the Bonner Springs Library was formed in nineteen forty-six, so that library was in effect. And there was, and some of these I'm having to guess a little bit, but that there was a library that composed the area of the USD five hundred as it was created at that time. So the areas left are generally referred to as the Piper, Edwardsville, Turner areas or PET. So the map that I gave you in your pack, it kind of shows at least the current boundaries of that library area. I don't know that that's changed over time. After the board was created and statutorily, it has the authority then to contract with other libraries, and it did so with USD five hundred to operate the library operations with all tax proceeds going to USD five hundred. So that's how it was originally set up. There was a resolution, and we've asked for a copy of that so we can complete that information from the UG. I will say that the attorney from the UG that works on this particular area with the library has been very forthcoming and provided tons of documents. So I know some of these are pretty dated, and so they've had to do some extra work. So I appreciate their work there. So this kind of operated until we got to consolidation. So we'll go to the next slide. So as we know, in nineteen ninety-seven, there was the consolidation of the city-county. And so my guess is there was a number of these pieces of governments between the two that they had to work through to see how those services would be provided. In this case, there was, there was a public library task force that was formed. And that task force met, it appears, for at least a year, just based on timings that were here. And it came up with four recommendations. The first was to restructure the library board itself. Second was to have the library board work with both USD five hundred and Bonner Springs to have a more county-wide library planning. So prior to that, as said earlier, Bonner Springs wasn't necessarily a part of this group because it had its own library. So I'm assuming there was not necessarily county-wide planning for libraries. They were also charged with the, coming up with inter-local agreements. And then there was a proposal or recommendation to raise the library tax levy, which at that point was two-point-three-four mils and raise it to three-point-three-eight mils. I'm not sure what the mil levy was prior to ninety-seven. My guess is it was probably at or about that two-point-three mils from that nineteen sixty-five time up to this date. We'll go to the next slide. So out of the recommendations from the task force, basically, the Unified Government Board of Commissioners, so now that's the consolidated body, did create a new board. That board is made up of eleven members, which coincidentally is the same number of people that are on the UG Board of Commissioners. So as you see in the charter ordinance that created this, basically, the mayor, CEO, and each of the commissioners have one appointment to the board. As it relates to Edwardsville, the mayor, CEO appoints one person from Edwardsville, and the District Eight Commissioner also appoints one person from Edwardsville. As you probably know, Mayor McTaggart is on the board, and Councilmember Stites is on the board. So Mayor McTaggart is the appointee by the mayor, CEO, Alvy, and Mr. Stites is the appointment of the District Eight representative. The District Seven representative, which covers Bonner, Edwardsville, appoints a member that resides within Bonner Springs. So again, there's eleven members total, but from our area, that's those three. Over time, the library tax has increased from that three-point-three-eight, which they did adopt, to the most recent, so the twenty-twenty mil levy was basically the same, though there was a slight increase in it. I think it went from six-point-one-two-two to six-point-one-two-nine, which, you know, it's not uncommon. So that is the twenty-twenty tax rate, which obviously the revenues are collected in twenty-twenty-one, just like the cities are. I would note that these districts, like libraries, are a lot like other special districts, and that is they adopt a budget. The budget gets submitted to a governing body. So if you had a rec commission, as an example, you know, depending on how the rec commission's formed, it's either by a city or by a school district, and those budgets go to those bodies. And part of the public hearing process and the mil setting process happens at that governmental entity. So effectively, that's what happens with libraries and their host agency. So if you look in the Wyandotte County or the UG budget, you'll see that notice of hearing when that library tax was adopted each year. The other outcome was there was an inter-local agreement that was entered into between the the library, County Library Board, the Bonner Springs Library Board, the USD five hundred, KCK Public Library, and the Unified Government. So you have a copy of that inter-local agreement. In part of the, that inter-local agreement called out that one-third of the Edwardsville mil equivalent would go to the Bonner Springs Library, hence, since people from Edwardsville, that tends to be the library they'd be most likely to go to. Obviously, they can go to any library in the public library system. And so there is a, that transfer specifically to Bonner Springs for twenty-twenty-one, it's estimated to be just under two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars. And as far as I know, that's been going on since this body was created in ninety-seven. So that's an idea of the financial. If you look at our mil levy, if you take that total mil levy and look at our value, we would generate somewhere in the vicinity of about four-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand a year to the library system as a whole. And then, again, this, this equivalent gets transferred to the Bonner Springs Library. If you look at the Bonner Springs budget, you would see that the Bonner Springs budget's about two-thirds of the cost of their library, and the other third is covered by this, I'm going to call it transfer of funds from the county library to the Bonner Springs Library. And then I think we have one more slide here. So that's a, kind of a quick overview of the library, how it was created, from what we understand, and kind of where we're at. We're happy to take questions, I think, and Lisa's on. She may want to add some comments here. I think at this point, it's understanding what directions that the, that the, our city commission as a whole wants. And, you know, do we want to explore, you know, creating our own library? Do we want to explore how this mil levy is set, or, you know, are there other pieces of this before Lisa and I go down, you know, other avenues? We have not had any one-on-one discussions with the library district, or Carol Levers, who's the library director. We're happy to do so, but really wanted to kind of have this discussion first, and if there are things to add to those discussions, we're happy to do so. Lisa, do you have anything you'd like to add before we get into any discussion or questions?
Um, I don't think I really do, other than to say that I think a lot of this was born out of discussions regarding, you know, COVID's impact with students being able to get a connection, be able to do their virtual learning, and then that kind of dovetailed into talking about libraries, and then, you know, Michael bringing up that that that's been kind of a question for quite a while. So all of it is kind of wrapped up together.
Thank you. So I don't know what questions there are. We may or may not be able to answer them, but it helps us just to give some directions of where we may, you know, want to go. Or, you know, do we want to have, for example, Ms. Levers come to a future meeting to discuss this further? Or, you know, staff is happy to get together with the parties. We just want to make sure we're spending our time and resources in the appropriate areas and and kind of carry out the policy of the council.
Hi, Mike. Can you hear me okay? Am I unmuted?
Yes. Nope, you're unmuted.
Okay, I had a couple of questions and just thoughts on where to go from here in this information. I think what we have so far is really helpful. A lot of money from Edwardsville is going to Kansas City, Kansas, and Bonner Springs that we're directly paying for out of tax dollars. And so I think it would be really beneficial to our community if we did have something in our city, some sort of a library where that would be a resource to our students and all community members, but especially as was just mentioned, while we're looking at students working from home, parents working from home. But then on further, I feel like if that much money or any amount of that could be kept in our community to benefit our city, it would be just better dollars spent, if that's possible. So I'm just wondering if we could find out if we are able to build our own library or create our own library, how much of that four-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars would stay in Edwardsville? And then also, how much would the annual cost be of running a library to see if it's within that four-hundred-and-sixty or if it would be an additional investment on top of that?
Okay. One thing I would note, and again, it's in your materials. So I think each, so the library, so the library board distributes the money basically to three areas. And I know that the mayor has a lot of experience in this, and I'm not sure how long Mr. Stites has been on there. But, but a large portion of the money goes to the Kansas City, Kansas USD five hundred for the operations of the library. That's the largest share, I think, around two-point-six million dollars. Then there is about, there's a contract with the Turner Rec Commission, and about four-hundred, I'm looking at the materials that they sent to us, about four-hundred-and-eighteen thousand dollars goes to support the Turner Library through the Turner Rec Commission. So as I understand it, the Rec Commission has those buildings and facilities. I think they're the old, some of the old Turner School District buildings. And so they, they provide a building and space, and the library provides the resources to operate. So there's that. And then the third piece goes to the Bonner Springs Library, which is about two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand for this upcoming year. So that's, that's the breakdown. I think there's also some money they're putting into reserve for future library development, you know, building development, et cetera. So that's, that's basically how their dollars come in and go out from the library board itself.
It is, it is my understanding that Edwardsville could probably participate in the, in the county-wide library and even do a, something similar to what the Turner area people are doing. Turner Recreation has, they, they provide the building and facilities for the library in Turner. So we could probably do something like that. I certainly do not, I'm not really excited about thinking that we would pull out of this Wyandotte County Library System and create our own. that we would pull out of this Wyandotte County library system and create our own and, and think we're going to do it at a cost savings.
Okay, we, we could certainly, that would be something to explore. You know, is that, how would that option work, et cetera, so?
Well, there again, you know, we currently do not have a building. So, uh, to create another library in, in Edwardsville with the current facilities, we, I don't think we have, uh, uh, any facilities to do that. So in the future, uh, with the, the future, um, expansion of City Hall, uh, we could probably create one in that, in that facility, so.
Mr. Adams, do you have a question? I, I see your mic is on. I didn't know if you had a question.
No, I think Carolyn covered it.
Okay, so I think then we was, oh, uh, oh, go ahead.
This is Steitz. Um, I, I, I think one of the things that I would like to say regarding it is that I think the way libraries operate in today's, uh, and in the future, it would give us an opportunity with, uh, to, to explore other means. Uh, it, uh, of, and maybe it's not a brick and mortar location, but, or it could be a smaller. Uh, we have, you know, with eBooks and all of the, the things, I, I don't know that you see as many people going into the library and checking books out, uh, as you used to, and I'm, and I may be wrong on that. But, um, I think it just gives us an opportunity to, to look at, uh, maybe some, uh, uh, some alternate ways of, of operating a, um, uh, library component in Edwardsville. And it may not be that a brick and mortar location is what we actually need.
But that, you also have to consider the staffing that we have currently. Do you want to, do you want to move, um, some of their areas into, to maintaining this, whatever you want to call it? If it's not a brick and mortar, then what is it? I, I understand what you're saying, and, and I, I, I certainly believe that, uh, that maybe library usage is, is down now, and, but that may be more due to COVID than anything else. But, um, um, Bonner Springs really gets their, gets their use out of their library for, for checking out books and, and, and other, other, uh, amenities that they provide their, their citizens. I know, um, in the, uh, in the recession here a few years ago, um, uh, the public library was the only place a lot of people could go to get a computer and get access to the internet. So, um, unless you set up something like that, then I, I have no idea what your, what your thoughts are about creating another library without having brick and mortar.
Well, I, i- i- in no way at all do I want to take away or diminish what Bonner Springs does. I think they do a great job, um, but they do also house the, uh, they ha- house the high school, which I think is, um, you know, a, a, a draw. Um, I don't know that we could support a, uh, an actual standalone building in Edwardsville. I'm not saying we could or couldn't. I don't know. I'm just saying, you know, we, they have the mobile libraries that, that, uh, may, I know that you're familiar with, uh, that they've, that talked about multiple times. Um, I just think that, you know, before we, we do anything, that we, we, we may, we may want to pull on, uh, uh, the, the, what other cities, that whole country, you know? Not just, we don't have to just, uh, explore what happened here in Wyandotte County, but we might be able to look at, see what other cities are doing and how they may, uh, uh, handle, uh, handle this type of situation.
Yeah, the only other small city I know and, and is, is Lansing. And, uh, Lansing has their own library, I know that, which is separate from the Le- Leavenworth City Library. So there are cities that do, but they're typically in more remote areas than they are in the metro areas like we are. So, um...
I, I think maybe some of the towns that we could look at are maybe like Leewood, Prairie Village, some of those smaller countryside, that type of place where they're in the Johnson County District. And if they have any satellite locations in their towns and how they've handled that, uh, to serve their citizens in the smaller boroughs in Johnson County, or maybe even in Jackson County.
Yeah, I, I don't know that those cities have separate libraries. It's because in, in, in Johnson County, it's just like Wyandotte County. It's called the Johnson County Library. And, uh, of course, their, um, their system is much more financially supported than we are in Wyandotte County. But, uh, I don't think the cities have, those cities in, in Johnson County have separate libraries. I think all the libraries are, are, uh, owned and operated and built by the Johnson County Library System.
Yeah, I guess what I was thinking is maybe if they have some very small satellite or if they've targeted specific usages. Um, and I know, uh, years ago, my mother was a librarian in, in Olathe in the Johnson County system. And they would be able to share books, like, uh, somebody could check out a book, you know, you know, maybe at one location, and it would take a couple of days to get to another location. But just having some kind of a depository or, or, uh, small, small shopping area.
There, the, the, uh, the mobile library used to come to Edwardsville, and, and I don't know whether, I don't know when that kind of tapered off, whether that might be another, uh, uh, result of the COVID where they've discontinued that. But, um, um, I don't know, Chuck, whether they do have anything like that there. Uh, uh, in Wyandotte County, the Wyandotte County Library System is connected with a, a larger system in the Midwest where they share, uh, books with, uh, from even other cities and other states. Uh, and I forget the name of that system, but anyway, they, there is such a, an operation where they, they, you can request a book, and if it's not in, in the Wyandotte County Library System, they will get it for you, so. Uh, and, 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 and for a while, Zach had some stuff in the, um, in the entry in, in City Hall, so, uh... But there again, I, I don't know, uh, a- at one time, the usage was pretty high, uh, but I think it has dropped off, but, uh...
So what is the, other than Bonner, where's the, where's the next closest library facility?
I, I think that what I said, Lansing has one.
That's the next closest to us?
Yeah.
No, I'm talking about within Wyandotte County.
82nd and State Ave, 82nd just north of State Avenue.
Okay.
That's, that's a west branch, and the, and the main branch is downtown, and then they have one in Argentine. And, um, those are the only three that they have.
Okay, thank you.
So there's no library in Turner?
Yes, Turner has one, but that's, uh, I, I, I didn't intentionally need to forget them, but they do have one in Turner. But it's, it's part of the Wyandotte County system, even though it's, it's, um, uh, the, uh, the, the, the revenue to, to pay for the staff in Turner is done by the Wyandotte County Library System, but Turner has their own facility under the Recreation Department.
I think one of the, oh, go ahead, Carolyn, please.
Oh, I was just going to say, I, and I think that's part of, um, my thoughts on it is when we're spending that much money in our mill levy dollars and all of it still is going to Kansas City, Kansas, um, whereas Turner has its own school district, it's still a part of Kansas City, Kansas, and the rest of the money is being funneled through the Kansas City, Kansas, um, school, school board or school system. Um, it's, it's just going to serve that population where we have a population here that I think would be served not only by a mobile system, but also that a lot of people go to the libraries for the computer labs and the internet availability. And I feel like that's really a need here in our city. And if it's at all possible to keep some of those mill levy dollars here to serve our city, um, it's worth looking into. Um, I don't, I don't know if it would end up, um, that we would need to decide as a, as a council, hey, we need to invest a little bit more here to supplement it. Um, but I think, and I could be wrong, but doesn't Turner's run about $400,000 a year?
You know, I, I don't know what they get, but like I said, you got to remember, the Turner Library is not part of the school district. The Turner Library is, the building is, is, is maintained by the Recreation Department and not the, not the high school.
I know. I, I've actually been to that one several times, and that's, um, similar to what I would see us, um, being able to pull off here in Edwardsville. It's a small library, um, it's the size of maybe two classrooms. If you, if you think of that, um, if you go into a school building and you took the wall out between two classrooms. So they've got, it's not the size of the main library or the South Branch or West Wyandotte, but they have, um, books and movies and a computer lab, um, and it's just a smaller scale. But for the Turner community, which is, um, you know, closer to our size community, a, a smaller subset of Wyandotte County, uh, whether it's partnering through the Kansas City, Kansas libraries or Bonner Springs libraries or doing something ourself, I just think it might be a good opportunity to look at serving our citizens a little bit, um, a little bit better and a little closer to home.
Well, um, before this, um, before this, back in the late 90s, there was some discussion by the, the library system, Wyandotte County Library, to try to, um, to put a satellite in Edwardsville. But I, uh, uh, they misread the intent of, um, of, of reorganizing the, the library board, and so they withdrew it. So, uh, and there again, I have no idea how serious they were. That's just another question altogether. But, but obviously, if we, we would create one, I would think that, uh, some of those revenues that we pay into the Wyandotte County Library System could be, uh, used to support a facility here in Edwardsville. But I, but I certainly do not support making a separate one, you know, from, from that, because I don't think you can do it for that kind of money.
I, I think it would be interesting to have the, um, uh, the lady that you were talking about from the library commissioner or director of the library to come out and share, maybe share their 20-year vision with us.
Sure. Carolyn's allowed to do that.
Yeah, and so we can kind of see what's in their thoughts right now. And then if any, any way that that could be adjusted or, or molded to include, uh, something that, like along, along what we're talking about.
So I, I think there's, uh, and been taking notes here, and certainly whether the mayor or I can reach out to Ms. Levers, who's the Director of Libraries, uh, to, to arrange that, uh, probably after the first year sometime. You know, I think some of the, the, and, and the discussions kind of shown that today. You know, part of the challenge is the funding formula, so to speak, in that you have certain portions of, of Wyandotte County, which happens to also include an incorporated city limits, uh, in, who are paying a mill levy that's very visible on your tax bill versus, uh, other places where you may not see it. So it, it built into the, the USD 500. Uh, you know, in Bonner Springs, there is a separate mill levy for the library, but it's built into the city budget, and then the library's budget is enhanced by these dollars. And so I, part of it is understanding, and I can't tell you that I do, uh, just, you know, thus far, but still trying to get into it, you know? How, how did we get to that map of, of those areas? I mean, I, I understand it's all the areas outside of Bonner and all the areas that were outside of USD 500 School District, uh, now. And, you know, there are probably certain parts of Edwardsville in 1965, without looking at all the annexations, where there are parts of the city that were technically in the county and parts of it that were in the city. And, you know, it ju- it just creates some, uh, complications trying to get back to some of the history. And again, the, the UG staff and, and folks and, and Carol and everybody has been very open and gracious in sharing information. It's just trying to get it all together, uh, and, and, and do that. And I, and I, I would say that Mr. Steitz is, is correct on this concept of, you know, how do libraries look today versus, or tomorrow versus today? And I thought it was interesting back, literally more than 30 years ago, uh, had a mayor say, "I want to go to a bookless library system, a library with no books." And that was 30 years ago, understanding that technology was going to change the library business. And we were just trying to get three separate computer systems to talk to each other, right? That was our big goal, was, these were old tape drive, big, big computers by IBM. And we were trying to make the three city libraries, we, we called it the HEB area, uh, and, and, you know, try to get us all talking, you know? So you could check out a book online, you could see it in all three libraries at the same time, versus, as some of us would remember, you went to the librarian, you gave her a card, and it was generally her card that said, "I want this book." And then they somehow called up someplace, and then the book literally got mailed to the library, and then they called you a week or two later and you went and picked it up, right? So, uh, the, the technology around knowledge is changing, and it's changing rapidly. So I would expect that will continue to do so. But I think to summarize, I think what we have heard, uh, is i- i- number one, to, uh, find a time for Ms. Levers to come, uh, share with the city council kind of the goals and the, and, uh, uh, future of the Wyandotte County Public Library System. Uh, two, explore options on libraries, uh, uh, you know, a satellite library or some mechanism, how might that, how that might get funded? And then last is just clearing up just kind of knowledge base of how we got from 1965 to today. Like I say, I think we have most of the information, but, you know, there's still some just general outstanding things, just so we have the complete pictures. I, I think those are the three areas that I've heard, uh, broadly discussed. And, and if there's others, I'm happy to take some further notes. But it seems like that's our marching orders for Lisa and I to move forward.
Mike, that sounds good. I, I think that we'd, if you would contact Carol and, and see what time in, in January, February, that we might have her out. And, and it would sure give the opportunity for the city council members to ask and have that discussion on what, what they see as the future of libraries. Because, uh, just like Chuck Stice said, we have no idea what the, what the future's going to bring. It may be a, and Mike, it may be that bookless library, who knows?
And we do, Mayor, you mentioned, uh, and Zach has stayed in contact, that we still have a little mini library at the front of City Hall. Uh, and I do think some of the challenges was, uh, COVID with the mobile. Some of it was just turnout. They, they had two or three or four places that they were looking at and just making sure that it, you know, that it's cost benefit, you know, that there's a cost benefit. I mean, obviously, to run the, that, uh, mobile book site is not free. It costs money. And so, um, I know that they were certainly interested in doing it, and we'll, we'll stay in contact on those things regardless. So I think with that, Mayor, I don't have anything else to add on this topic. We can finish that up.
Very good. Thank you, Mike, and thank Council for the comments. So, so, uh, we'll move on to the next item, but consider canceling December the 28th, 2020 city council meeting.
I don't know that it needs much introduction. Traditionally, we have canceled this meeting. Sometimes it's a few days before Christmas, sometimes it's a few days after Christmas. Obviously, this year, it's a few days after Christmas. Um, we know in our next meeting, we have a budget amendment, though it looks like we may only have one department. We have to amend one or two, uh, not the general fund. So I think it's our technology fund, and we may amend the solid waste fund just to make sure we, you know, we just don't get into a, a, a budget violation type of scenario. So those are the two likely changes at the next meeting. We'll have planning items at the next meeting. But generally, that meeting in December, we're able to, uh, get by until the first meeting in January, which I believe is the 14th, and we don't- And we don't have any planning commission items in December. So we won't have any planning commission items for January. So I think overall, everything is, is pretty good. And there's not necessarily a reason to have that second meeting in December and people can enjoy their holidays that way.
Okay. And this takes council action. So we will entertain a motion and a second to cancel that meeting.
Make the motion that we cancel the December 28th, 2020 meeting.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to cancel a December the 28th council, council meeting with the clerk. Please call roll.
Stites?
Okay. There, for some reason, Zach, did you have me muted? Because I couldn't change it.
Okay.
Anyway, yes.
Adams?
Yes.
K R?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
And Schreiber?
Yes.
Very good. Motion, Gary. So we will, we will cancel the December 28th meeting. So with that, we're going to move into advisory reports, Mike and Zach. So.
I'll start and then I know Zach has a couple. Speaking of holidays, this week is Thanksgiving holiday. So city offices will be closed Thursday, Friday. So we hope all of you all have an enjoyable holidays. Please stay safe. I don't think I need to repeat everything that's, that's been said over the number of weeks about gatherings, et cetera, and so forth. So I know everybody will, will do their part. We did have, as you know, we have two grant applications out with, through Mark. One is through the Alternative Transportation Group, which is our, what we call, I think, Connect Edwardsville, which would connect, build a sidewalk system from downtown into the park. Unfortunately, they, they took a position instead of funding everybody at around 80%. They funded the top six projects at 100%. I'm a bit disappointed. I don't serve on that committee, but Dustin does. And I will tell you, he represented as well and he did not support that recommendation. Unfortunately, there was not many Kansas representatives on the committee that day. And that particular group is made up of both Kansas and Missouri. It's possible, there are some funds there, but the amount of them was fairly small. I say small, about 130,000. The problem is by the time you spend the extra work to do a federal project, 130,000 doesn't really go very far towards a project that's, you know, four or $500,000. The good part is, is it's still within the SDP, which is the Other Surface Transportation Program. And that committee won't meet until December 3rd. And of course, we have our 98th Street project in, in that group. Traditionally, that group has tended to try to find ways to fund a broader spectrum of projects. It's typically not started at the top and go 100% and just go down the line. If so, they'll fund two or three projects and they'll be out of money. Because there are some of those projects that are fairly large, large dollar amounts. So I expect that there'll be a little bit broader spectrum. Though we're still, we're above the median line, but we're still kind of in that, in that group. So we'll, we'll see how, how that falls out. There are several options where we would get funded. We won't get funded at 100%, which is not uncommon, but we'll continue to work on that. Other than that, I don't believe I have anything. I know Zach has a couple of, of comments from admin that he'd like to make and I'll turn it over to him.
Okay, Zach, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah. Quick updates. One on the, one of our CARES projects. So we had, and the city manager has been updating you all and some of the progress for that. One of those being the kind of remote work technology that, that we've invested in. That included tablets, mobile tablets to distribute to elected officials for, ideally for situations like this. So if we are in a, you know, public health situation where we can't meet in person or if somebody is sick and can't meet in person, what we would do is distribute tablets to all elected officials. So that way it's easier for staff on our end to coordinate. You know, we're all working up using the same interface and on the same hardware. So it's easier to troubleshoot. So we started to receive those tablets for the elected officials. So what we are going to be doing here over the next couple of weeks is getting them essentially just ready to hand over and launch. So that includes getting all the software needed to participate in meetings like this, maybe some email capabilities. They, they won't have internet connectivity on their own, so they'll be connected to your wifi. We'll develop an inventory system so there's a way to, you know, turn them back in after terms are over and things like that. But that combined with the AV improvements to the council chambers, which I'll touch on here in a second, as well as the security upgrades for the community center as it relates to moving court over there have come in under budget. So I think by and large, at least in that tech area, as it relates to remote work for staff and remote accessibility for the council, and then AV upgrades for the council chambers, were coming in under budget in that area. So on the council chambers, so what we've got kind of a concept mocked up. It essentially involves, the layout would remain the same in the council chambers. We would do away with the projector screen on that, that north wall. It would be replaced. So essentially two large screens, one facing into the crowd and one kind of taking the place of where that projector screen would go. There were a comment made by, by this group, how, you know, they didn't, they weren't really a fan of that configuration. We've got some limitations with the room, but the workaround that we're, we're trying to see if that'll work is individual monitors at each council station. So essentially they would have the ability to see what's on the screen without having to crane their head awkwardly and be able to follow along that way. And so all that would be hardwired into the same. So essentially the presentation piece of the council, everybody would be on the same page at the same time, following the same, seeing the same information and following the same presentations. And for the elected official, it would be right at your station and you'd be able to, to access it that way. Also looking into, you know, possibility for digitizing or how we could incorporate digitizing council packets and, and agenda materials and things like that. So as those get firmed up, we'll make sure to share the concepts we've got with this group. So everybody knows what the plans are going to be moving forward. The other item, and this is on a little bit more on the fun side. So on our, for last, I guess, six weeks or so, so we've been running a photo contest on our, over our Facebook. 16 different photos were submitted from all around town. And we kind of did a single elimination tournament where we would, they were randomly seated and kind of pitted against each other and whoever got the most positive reaction, likes or hearts on Facebook, moved on. These are our final two pictures after 16 photos and over a thousand different people submitting their, their likes or their hearts. So we'll post this to the Facebook tomorrow at 4:30 and it'll be open until this coming week from today. And whoever's got the winning photo will be the winner. And the winner will receive a free month of trash service if they're eligible. And also the picture will be featured on the cover of the budget book, the narrative budget book that we developed for the end of the year. It will also feature all the photos in various capacities on the website. So I've, I've credited their two photo takers for these two pictures, Amanda Stewart and Irene Tucker. Had a lot of great pictures and the fact that we were able to kind of generate, you know, a pretty regular habit of people going and checking the website when these, or excuse me, the Facebook, when these would drop. You know, that generates, the more people we have coming to our, our social media for kind of fun stuff like this, the more likely they're going to see things like public safety updates from the police department or updates on COVID testing going on in Bonner or whatever other community updates are going on. So the idea is to generate some kind of fun atmosphere over our social media that people make an appointment to go check out. And then while they're doing that, get some important information related to what else is going on in the city. So keep an eye out for this tomorrow when it drops. And other than that, I have nothing else to report.
Thank you, Mike and Zach, and we'll move on to Chief Mathis.
Good evening, everyone. First of note, I kind of mentioned before we had escaped a COVID positive. However, at, at a retest, that person did, that officer did test, test positive. So we've had a quarantine. And I'd like to mention that Sergeant Josh Brooks has lost his brother. His brother passed away and after the Thanksgiving holiday, he'll be in, out of town attending services. So our thoughts and prayers go out to him. Of note on our building, our project has started and it sounds like the demolition will start officially on Monday morning. So that's what we have.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Widdam?
Yes, we really don't have anything other than is, it went out in the community hot shot this week to be on the lookout for cringle cakes. What we've done and what we're looking at doing is a pancake breakfast that is several thousand pancakes that we're going to feed for the residents in the senior center and the three nursing homes and then open up to the community. It's not going to cost the community anything. We are going to work with some fundraising efforts if they want to contribute for non-perishable foods to resupply the church's food bank. We can do that. We may have some items that they could gather in to give to the seniors and the towers and the nursing homes or in-kind calculations that help offset the expenses for all of this. With the cram the cruiser now, cringle cakes come out because we were originally going to do pancakes with Santa to support cram the cruiser. However, COVID has kind of ruined that. So this was a, a idea from the firefighters. And then after the reaction that we saw with the Halloween haunt, they wanted to do this to support the Parks and Rec program of Halloween haunt and the Ho Ho Express. So that is December the 19th. There'll be more information coming on that. As part of COVID, we have solicited and got confirmed support for seven families for cram the cruiser from our industry and partners with, as we have with the city. So seven families will be taken care of with that. We do have the boots out. And on a note, when this cram the cruiser is done this year, the efforts are going to be put into pancakes with Santa and cram the cruiser was probably just going to die along with 2020.
Thank you, Chief Widdam. We're moving on now to Public Works. Dustin, do you have anything?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Not a lot here. The guys have been, guys and gals, I guess, gal, have been completing some stuff. They worked really hard last week to do a crack hill down there on River Falls to get ready for keeping the winter weather out of those cracks and stuff. So we rented a machine and is a daily rental thing. So I commend them for working hard to get that thing back quickly and get a good project done. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dustin. Lisa, do you have anything?
I do not, other than to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you and a happy Thanksgiving to you. Okay. Moving on to the council members, Councilmember Stites, we're going to start with you.
Nothing.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Schreiber?
I do have a couple of things. First of all, I want to thank Mike and Lisa, whoever else was involved in researching all of the library tax information. That makes it a little more clear and appreciate all the ideas. Maybe something different in the future, whatever the case may be, but thank you for all that hard work. And second, Zach, did all of the people in Edwardsville that had bulky item pickup not picked up? Did all that get resolved? Do you know yet?
I did kind of take a cruise around town early this morning and on Sunday, the items. So to catch everybody up, the bulky item pickup was scheduled for on November 14th. I know a large chunk of the town got handled on that day. There were sections in the Edge Hill neighborhood and then on Kansas Avenue west of 110th Street that did not get serviced. I know some addresses up on the hill and then a couple spotty addresses south of K-32 didn't get serviced. In talking with Waste Management, they also are dealing with some staffing shortages to COVID exposure. The word that I got on Thursday, they were needing to bring in temporary labor to just kind of help shore up regular service lines, which obviously affected the timely delivery of, of that, that service. The materials that I knew were still out, as of Friday, were not out Monday morning. I've not had any, I've not solicited any comments from anybody saying that their items are still missed. I know Edge Hill was handled later in the day on Friday. I'm not certain on when Kansas Avenue was, was, was handled, but I know that I had interactions with the folks who lived on that street and told them the direction I was giving was to leave their material out and they would be picked up. So I couldn't say for sure if they just said, threw in the towel and, and pulled their items back, but they were not there this morning. And I've not filled in any calls or complaints so far that, that they, that there's areas still left out. So if you're hearing anything like that, please let me know and we'll get that addressed. But I know that that was drawn out longer than what we had anticipated, but hopefully the areas all got addressed.
Right, right. Through nobody's fault, like you said, a lot of different things happened. So two more things. I want to give a shout out to Councilmember Kayhart for her efforts, her organization, her setting up and handling and orchestrating the harvesters down at the community center. And a lot of help from a lot of volunteers. And Edwardsville Fire Department, Police Department was there to help and super big help. And I think Carolyn, it ran smooth. A lot of families were fed. And I think that even all the volunteers that were there working were able to take some food to people. They may be new. And I think Von Trump came and was able to fill up some of their shelves. So it was a very successful day. And that was just huge efforts on your part. So I think that was a wonderful day. And I want to wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving. That's all I have.
Thank you, Margaret. Councilmember Malat?
I'm not, I don't think. I want to shout out to all of the public safety people for what they do for the city. I see them out doing things on highways and issuing tickets and helping people. I saw them helping a person with a, broke their car the other day. And I think it's just really cool that those guys are out there like that, making Edwardsville proud. I didn't know on the library, would it be possible to develop some kind of a survey for Edwardsville residents to see what they would expect out of the library or what they really know about the library that we're paying so much for? And possibly with the library being located a distance from Edwardsville, maybe the county could figure out some kind of way of transporting some of our residents to the libraries if they had transportation issues or something like that. I'm just kind of throwing that out there. I know that, I don't, I'm like Chuck Stites or, yeah, Stites, I don't know what libraries do anymore. And, you know, it might be a good idea on that projection that what library, what are expected out of libraries, right? But I'm just kind of throwing that out there. Maybe a little survey to see what, and what we could do to help the residents of Edwardsville with libraries. Other than that, I hope everybody has a good COVID-free Thanksgiving. Stay safe. It's going to be a different one this year and I will see you at the next meeting.
Thanks, sir. Councilmember Kay R?
Okay. I've got just a couple of things. I wanted to just follow up on the railroad issues. Have, have those pretty much been resolved with the? Have, have those pretty much been resolved with the train cars blocking the entrances and exits to downtown Edwardsville?
I think they have been. I have not heard of any problems since then. Like I said, we did have discussions with the railroad. We, we did not ever hear back from Federal Railroad Administration, though they may have passed their comments on down to the UP who then contacted us. So, I mean, obviously there's occasions when that happens, but I'm not aware that we've had any further instances where trains have just been parked for long periods of time on the tracks, whether loading or, you know, unloading and things of that nature. So I think for the time being, it is resolved.
Good. Do we have anyone that has chosen to do the community service or trash pickup as part of their court sentencing?
I am not aware of any. I think we'll, we'll get back with the judge to see if there's another pathway on, on that program to see, you know, if there's something else. I know one, one thing he commented on was maybe increasing the value of the time. I think we were using like 12 bucks an hour or something of that nature. And he, his initial suggestion was maybe that should be raised as to its value. I mean, we don't pay them, but, you know, but the value per hour towards their citations. And so I will follow up with the judge and, and see. I know we've, he's made it available, he's brought it up, but that's where that's at right now.
Okay. There's been some discussion on Facebook and some social media about the projects going on 110th Street from Speaker to Riverview and then from Riverview over east. And some folks were concerned in, in just the looks of it and all the trees being ripped out and just the, the visual appearance of the entrance to our city. Do you know if we already have planned or if we will plan on replanting any easily maintained trees, evergreens or anything along those road, roadways?
There's not any plans to put trees back in the right of way. Typically, we try to avoid trees in rights of way. You know, that's going to get, I think once it's regraded and changing, you know, right now they're seeing probably the worst of it in the sense of, yes, they, they come in and they take those trees out and, and remove them and, and take those things out. I think is the project, which will be, you know, really, really probably spring of 2022, when the project will be at a state where we can, you know, look at, do we want to do some different landscaping? For example, you know, median landscaping or anything along the trail. But most of, you know, the sidewalks and the trails are all pushed back to the edge of the right of way. So there's, we don't really have public property that'll be behind the sidewalk systems. So, you know, at this point, there's not much with that that we can, we could do unless it was planted on private property, which certainly may be part of projects. You know, projects come in, we certainly always focus on the landscaping around those projects. I, I will say just for, for reference, that the project is scheduled to go to bid on the 21st of December with a bid letting on the 21st of January. And what they call an early start date. So in other words, the earliest it could start, a notice to proceed would be March the 1st with effectively substantial completion by November and all completion the following spring. And the reason for the, for the lag there is you have a planning seasons. KDOT, on KDOT projects, they only have about 60-day planning in the spring and 60-day in the fall. And so they'll require whoever the contractor ends up being to come back and do all the final, you know, any, any finish grades and, and seeding and sodding and any of those types of things that might be required would occur in the springtime. Unless they get earlier on and they can get that stuff in, I think November 15th is the, the end of planning season, either November 1 or 15. So it gets pretty hard to meet that timeframe on a project like this. That's something we could look at. It won't be part of the KDOT project. And quite honestly, we don't want to incorporate landscaping to the KDOT project because it'll just, I mean, it'd be on our dollars, but it would probably cost more to do it through that than to do it as a separate project.
And do we have any updates on the sign, the signage for the CARES Act funding, the digital signs?
I think our only option is going to be to acquire the temporary sign. We just have not been able to get a location set on, you know, to do that sign. One suggestion that came, came out was, you know, as that, as we finish that project up north, as you're coming in up there, that potentially, you know, we've talked about monument signing or something there. Is that a potential location in the future for a digital sign? As you're coming in from I-70 into the, you know, into the city on 110th Street? And that, that may be a, a good location for that. So, you know, it won't be CARES Act dollars because that'll be way down the road. But, you know, it is something we may possibly want to look at if that's a, a different site to look at for digital, digital signings.
Did we, did we talk to the church there about using any of their land? If they would let us do that or let us?
I have not, but I can reach out to them. You might be able to help me make contact there. I know you, you have good contacts. So maybe tomorrow we could get together via phone and, and you can help me make contact. Certainly would be willing to discuss that, you know. I'd like to ask the state to release that right of way, but it just takes them so long to do it that it, it probably becomes, you know, just too much. It just, it's a slow process when dealing with the state on right of way issues, so.
Absolutely. Well, we can touch base tomorrow and I can help you get connected there. I just thought it might not hurt to ask and see what our options might be. And then last, I wanted to just mention that Harvesters event. Thank you so much, Margaret, for, for bringing it up. She was a great help that day. And, and Councilman Malat stopped by and so it was great to see those guys. We were able to serve over 100 households, over 500 people, 29 seniors, 207 adults, 219 children. Then we were able to stock up Von Trent's pantry after that. We had great support from the city, from the fire department, from the police department. Price Chopper in Bonner Springs donated grocery bags for us to use to be able to pass out groceries to folks. We had great volunteers. The Christian Church was a resource for us, Edwardsville Christian Church, Church, sorry, was a great resource to us for that too. And we just, we had a great group of volunteers, so it took a lot of people to pull it off. But overall, we were able to serve 500, over 500 people that day and hopefully fill up their, their cabinets and refrigerators for a week or so. So that was a great event, so I just wanted to thank everybody. Zach was a great help to us as well. So thank you guys for that and have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Carolyn. I was not in town or I wish I could have been there, but I was out of town. But I want to thank you again for all your efforts, I really appreciate that. Moving on to Councilman Adams.
Okay, this is a joy of being last. Did you get everybody, get everything off your list? So you've got a very long list. Regarding the trash rollout, is the first new trash pickup from the new company, is that going to be January 5th?
So we're working those details right now. We're whittling down the address count that the city's going to be providing. The last day for the contracted on Waste Management side is the 29th. So likely what's going to happen is when Waste Management picks up trash on that, trash recycling on that day, they'll, they'll take the carts at the same time. And then KC Disposal will be by that day or the next day to drop off the new carts, meaning that the first official day would be that, that Tuesday, that first Tuesday in January, which I do believe is the fifth.
Okay, I would appreciate if you keep us pretty tightly in the loop on this so that any citizens we interact with, we would be able to share that information. And, you know, so, you know, if any of us have email lists or whatever, we can get that, a, a standard email or a standard brochure out to everybody, that would be great.
Can do, no problem.
Okay, I, I also would like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. A little bit different than the normal one, but we have an awful lot to be thankful for. That's it.
Thank you all. I have nothing further to add other than my appreciation to the council for their input on the issues that we've had tonight. And it's been very beneficial, I believe, and we're going to move forward on something anyway. But anyway, I, I want to wish everybody a very, very, very happy Thanksgiving and we are adjourned. Thank you.